Good afternoon. Welcome to Wednesday afternoon, Hump Day.
Yes, it is.
It was a reason to party over at Central.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Wednesday, the kid next door would, that was back in the day with speakers like yay tall, you know? He'd bring them outside the door and put on some, uh, Boston and we'd just start partying.
Perfect. That is.
Anyway, I digress.
We could. Uh, Mike Moss, Public Services Director. Uh, just a few items today, mainly on the facility side. Uh, then we'll visit with Sean Rowey and you guys on the tax increment financing, the TIF. Uh, so we'll start off with HOJ Deli. Uh, you've got a couple of images of there in front of you of the new deli case, but also in the picture on the second page, you can easily see on the left's new coffee maker, a drip coffee maker. And then to the right of that, the bigger silver box is a countertop ice machine. And the straight ahead on that counter is an espresso machine. So, um, Kelly was helpful in leasing this equipment here. Other than the deli case, we actually purchased that. Um, I don't have, I don't have a timeframe. Maybe Kelly does on next steps of Health Department and maybe, maybe open, we get a lot of questions like when, when this is going to get opened over there or when staff's working on it. So I know we're getting close.
Yeah, we are working on, um, with the Health Department to get our official approval to open the doors. Um, they should have an inspection. I'm assuming we should have something by next week. So we should be able to get a timeframe that we'll be able to open, but we're looking hopefully by May, uh, April 1st.
Okay.
To open and, but there's still a lot to do that we need to purchase the supplies and, and that.
Yeah.
So we have a temporary employee that's going to be from the, so we're not hiring anybody. So it's just going to be one person right now until we see what we can have. We talked to Superior Court about what their needs are for the jury. So they're excited and we're going to work out a process for them, uh, using grab and go items from the gifted kitchen. So we'll have coffee and grab and go items. We're not going to be making any kind of food at all. So we're going to be storing it. So.
Great. It's on the picture, but there's also a large commercial refrigerator against the back wall. So it'll be extra storage for more sandwiches or salads or whatever you have on site there. Uh, it does look kind of dirty on the floors and stuff in the picture. We have not done a deep cleaning yet. We did add a third washing, hand washing sink or a third sink for the, the Health Department requirements. That got completed, uh, I think a week and a half ago or so. So I think we're all ready for the Health Department inspection. Great.
How long has it been? It's down in COVID or before?
Gary Hooper, I believe, is the last one that had a contract there. And yeah, I'd say four years ago, five. Yeah.
So this is only for stored items that are refrigerated items? Are there going to be any unrefrigerated items?
She might be able to answer that better.
Um, they do have some options for us. We're looking maybe some stuff that Red Leaf has that is like breads that people can heat up. So they would order, um, and get a bread and then they can go, we are purchasing a microwave that it will be a self-service kind of thing where we're not going to be heating up for them. Gifted Kitchen also has stuff like, uh, soup that we can keep cold and then they purchase it and they can go heat it up. There's mac and cheese, um, some other little items that they have with that option. So.
No candy bars or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have can, you know, just little grab and go stuff, tips, candy bars, pop and things that we don't have to make ourselves.
Okay. I assume this is a refrigerated case in this picture, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Awesome.
All right. Uh, item number two, if you have no more questions on HOJ Deli is the North Parking Lot. Uh, we brought this to your attention a couple of weeks ago, but also last time during budget cycle, how one of our last parking lots we're doing is the North Parking Lot here. It's in pretty rough shape. And we also, it sits by the Kelso City Street. Uh, still trying to coordinate some efforts to get this done with the city of Kelso. At the same time we're doing the lot.
Right along that, yeah.
Doesn't appear that's on the city of Kelso's list for repair this year, but we're still having those discussions to see. It makes sense if we're doing our work, uh, they can do their work at the same time because it's, that, that street is in pretty rough shape. And most people assume it's a, it's a county parking lot, but that, that part's not.
Yeah. And we can't do it for them because we run into gifting.
Yeah, correct.
Deals. We've tried it.
Yes. Yeah. So you have a few pictures there. Um.
Can't they contract with us?
They could.
Could they?
Yeah, they could piggyback on our contract. When we do overlay, I just don't think they've had it budgeted for this year, this year.
We were at one point just willing to do it, not charge and you can't do that.
Yeah, I can understand that part of it. I can see the snag there. Yeah.
So what are you going to do with these trees?
Well, that's, that's what we're going to discuss. So a few pictures along the way there, you can see one of the, uh, those are called London, London Plains, actually. It's a high, I got some notes here and they're a high bred between American Sycamore and Oriental Plain Tree. Uh, it's a large shade tree that usually when it grows up with age, it may have a height of 70 to a hundred feet with a width of 60 to 75, which looks very similar to what we have there. I think these trees are, as you can tell from the, the base and the roots are fairly mature. Um, they can be a messy tree with lots of leaves and twigs and fruit. But the big problem with these trees here is some of the pictures show, you know, I took these just about an hour ago. It's a lot, of course, the cars are in place. Well, you can tell by a lot of the curbs are broken up. We have a lot of issues in the, in the parking stalls themselves. And we're also going to be grinding this down two to four inches before we do overlay on it. And so, uh, we'll probably be diving into some of these roots, but they can develop massive trunks and spreading crowns. Um, the roots are so tough and aggressive, they can lift sidewalks, curves, invade sewer pipes and crack building foundations. And that's, we have examples of that out there. Uh, they typically have a root depth ranging from 10 to 15 feet, but their roots extend out two to three times the width of their canopy. So they're going down and they're going way, way out. And that's what's causing a lot of our breakup in that lot. So.
Wow.
Um, we, we had the, uh, an arborist come out and look at, they, 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 their decision, their, their thought to us is they, they, they thought they should be taken out, especially if we're going to spend that much money redoing that parking lot, uh, since they probably weren't the right trees that were planted there to start with 50 years ago.
I was going to say, whose plan was this?
Yeah. Um.
They're, they're not some kind of protected special tree or?
No, not at all. Uh, there's 11 trees total in that lot and that side. Uh, if you go north, more towards the sidewalks on the north end there, that's the sidewalk's tilted. Um, I've sent, I think the last picture in here, if I, maybe I didn't put it in there. Oh yeah. There's a fence line between the parking lot and Cougar Cottage. Uh, our plan was also to take out that fence. Um, and there's not a lot of green dirt space there, but we talked about maybe planting some shrubbery there, kind of replacement of the trees, not certainly not a full replacement. Uh, but, uh, our, our suggestion, recommendation is the board is to remove those 11 trees. And then we'll start with a clean slate there. Uh, one of the reasons I gave you the picture that shows the drop box that for the elections in place there, maybe work with the elections. If we have a clean slate and take everything out, including the curbs and the trees, we might reconfigure that lot also and maybe find a better home for that drop box for the elections. Um, but before we visit with Carolyn on this, I want to make sure we're on the same page of, uh, redoing that North Lot completely with no trees. So, uh, the bid we got originally was about 15,000 for complete removal of those trees. Uh, we'd probably do it with a third party and not our crews because they are so tall and just do it on a weekend.
And you don't want to put trees back in there?
No, no, we, we at the HOJ, when we just repaved that list last summer, we actually took out all the curb stops and went flat through the whole area and put new curb stops in and repainted stripes a little wider, just made it a nice cleaner look. Um, you know, shrubbery is one thing, but trees are just, there's this challenge you know, work with in your parking stalls.
Did take out a handful or a few at HOJ.
Yeah, we do. And we claimed those up on the third avenue side, but anything in the middle, we took out about, I don't know, six or seven trees last summer. And when we actually did, we did that lot, but everything on the third or first avenue through there, uh, we, we kept, we just trimmed those way back, especially along HOJ itself. There's most of them, a lot of them are overhanging in the building or against HOJ. And we had those all cut back last year. So, um, our suggestion is that, but certainly we'll, we're, you know, we'll work with you guys. If you think we should keep trees in place, uh, we can trim them, trim them back. Uh, but, uh, we, we'd like to be able to remove them. We're also concerned if we grind that far down, when you start getting to the root systems that they're going to kill them anyway or die off next couple of years and we'll have issues there on top of it. But right now they're pushing up in so many areas. And I don't want to spend that much money in that North Lot and then three years from now have concerns again of curbs and,
Yeah.
and damage to the pavement. So it's never an easy choice taking out trees. We under, we understand that.
Well, I'm all in favor of taking the trees out, but I wish we were, we could come up with a solution to put trees back in there, even if we had to cut them down every 25 years instead of every 50 years.
Yeah. And we could look at that. We could, maybe we'll map that out and see how we keep a narrow strip there and get a, a certain type of tree that works well for this environment of working next to pavement, come back with a, a thought for you. Yeah.
I know, uh, not that I'm crazy about the idea, but something that is really well liked is all these, a lot of you planted all these oriental cherry trees with all the nice little pink blossoms that they're there for only a couple of days and then they're all over Hell's Half Acre. But, uh, everybody seems to really like those dang things.
And they're beautiful when they're, you're right, when they, they bloom.
Beautiful when they bloom. Uh, well, the flip side of it is, is, uh, they do the same thing to the sidewalks. If you let them go too long and long you seeing that now, I got it in front of my house. So.
So.
Yeah. Just a thought.
Yeah.
I'd much rather see the shade trees out there than, than shrubs, but.
Yeah, I understand. That, that, we're just trying to think of something that we could replace that wasn't going to maybe do damage down the road. So, you know, and we, we talked to Wazoo. They're okay with us taking that, that fence between our property. And I mean, it's our property on both sides, but make sure they, they weren't concerned about, uh, people coming through there. But they said it's already a hidey hole for them. They have people go back in that fenced area that they don't know or back there. So they prefer not to have that fence in place.
Yeah. So if you remove the fence, you're going to put shrubbery down that?
That row there, yeah. But I looked today on the backside thinking maybe there's a lot of dirt space between that fence and, and, and Wazoo. And, and there's not, it's, it's all paved back there or concrete actually. So, yeah, some might be able to get rid of that, pave, break that out. Because no one parks back there. It's just, it's.
Did they put that up when Love Overwhelming was in there?
Uh, yes, they did. Keep people out. Yep. Exactly right.
Those low shrub holly bushes that they got like over Kaiser, put a whole row of holly bushes in there, keeping from going through it.
Through there. Yeah. And we even talked about maybe the south end of that fence taking or if we want more, better access, we'll have to see how traffic flow is, but maybe open that up. So people will actually leave the parking lot that way also. But maybe do some diagonal parking in front of, uh, Wazoo's main entrance there. But that's maybe down the road right now. We really just want to get that fence out and open up the world there and clean up that, that space. Like I said, that's one of our last parking lots we need to, we need to do around here.
Well, I don't think you have any opposition to taking those, taking those out and doing what you want to do. No. I think we're just asking if you find something you think that'll fit and replace.
Will do.
Take a look at that.
We'll definitely do that.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem. And.
That was easy.
Yeah. The last one, uh, the administrative building skylights, the one we talked about a couple of weeks ago in the hallway here, we didn't.
Look at that thing. What do you think hit that? Just.
We don't know.
If you just change or something, just.
Yeah. And we don't actually know how long it's been that way. It may have been that way for, I don't know how many people actually look up there. Uh, so it may have been that way for a couple of years or maybe just a couple of months. Uh, we, we reached out to a local roofer, um, who actually one that's on contract for the county. Uh, they've actually. Uh they've actually inspected it or giving us a quote, so we don't have the number yet, but that way you can compare the quote of actually roofing it over versus uh just replacing the skylight or skylight, so. Uh we're hoping to have a tarp over it so you can see how dark it gets, but last week we had some snow and this week we had a bit of wind earlier the week, so we'll probably have a tarp over it uh next week so you can see the difference.
Didn't want to send anybody up there in the wind?
A little parachute.
Oh man, I could tell you a bad story about that.
So hopefully next week or so I'll get you some other numbers that we can do some comparisons comparisons there, but for sure, we're doing the uh the roof project this summer, so we're replacing the whole roof anyway, so. And the last one I have on facilities is the HOG, HOJ feasibility, and that's Savannah's, and I have some handouts for you.
Good afternoon, Savannah Clement Public Services. So this feasibility study we actually received back in September. Um I had brought it to the board, talked about it with the board over the a couple of months, and um the decision was made to hold off until the new board came on um and then and give you and Commissioner Rader an opportunity to review the material, um have an understanding of the kind of the situation at the Hall of Justice, and then we would uh move forward in whichever direction um the board deemed they wanted to go. Um today, I'm not asking for any any approval or um recommendation at this time. I I just wanted the the board to have the information that we have. And then I also provided um an HOJ feasibility study summary so that the new board members would have some context to kind of the ongoing discussions surrounding the Hall of Justice. Um the feasibility study itself aims to just provide the community, the board and staff with factual information on the current um state of the building, and then also address future potential needs. Of course, we don't always know what those are. Sometimes we have legislative updates that require us to do certain things, especially with legal. Um but they're going to provide a kind of a conceptual feasibility study so that we have a better understanding of what we'll need to do at that building. Um also, I would like to add that they'll also be looking at alternatives. So they're looking at potential lease options. They would be looking at a possibility of building a new campus, and they'll also be providing rough estimates to do those options. Um so in the feasibility study, we would like them to provide again um how much it would cost to upgrade the building, to get it to kind of a modern standard of energy efficiency, accessibility, et cetera. Uh also some cost estimates on what it would be to build a new building on county-owned land, and then also, of course, the lease option um for upfitting to current needs and future needs at a potential leased space. Um when we were pursuing this, we actually had a steering committee uh that was called Hall of Justice Facility Needs, and this was kind of the product of that committee um to just get some better information to provide some direction. Nothing we do there will be inexpensive, um unfortunately. So um yeah, that's what you have in front of you. I will also send it electronically if that's helpful uh to Commissioner Rader as well, just to review. And I'll be back here every Wednesday. If you guys have questions, concerns, I'll just keep it on a list to discuss, but we'll probably have to make some determination with Aeta who provided the proposal probably in the next couple of months, um or just table it, so. Um and and we can look at it again in the future.
How does this kind of marry with the study the other group is doing?
Great question. Um so the the Milig study, that's our energy esco, was what we call it, energy. I don't remember what the esco stands for. Anyway, um they're really primarily focusing on energy efficiency measures, so HVAC, lighting, fixing are really problematic panels there. Uh this, that will, we, Aeta knows that and they knew that when they created this proposal, so none of that uh investment-grade audit information is going to be part of Aeta's uh proposal. Um the only thing that I'd asked them today to maybe consider is um plumbing. So just because A uh Milig won't be touching anything related to plumbing or um engineering as far as structural design, they won't be doing any of that. It will mainly be mechanical and electrical engineering that that um Milig will be providing to us. So.
Is that building uh conducive to any type of expansion either horizontally or vertically?
Uh again, great question. That is one of the options that uh this study will look at. Um so when it was designed and then it had some upgrades in the eighties, they actually, the overhang on the north side of the building was constructed to anticipate future growth. So however, um we we think, and Sean did some research on this with the Dyking District, uh we won't be able to fully expand to that original intent back in the seventies um due to the Dyking system. Uh it is right there on a small patch of land between the Dyking District and the road um that it's constructed and we could run into some problems. However, um Aeta as part of this will will be exploring that more um heavily. But uh we could, there there is the option, it's just we're unsure of what we could get accomplished for the pricing and the square footage gained.
Is that restriction for the Dyking just to the north side or would it exist to the south also?
Do you want to, yeah.
First, morning, afternoon.
Morning.
Sorry. Um just in our brief research, um the Hall of Justice is in the widest section between First Avenue and the levee itself. Um the toe of the levee does appear to um go past the edge of the building in some sections, so it would have some setback issues there. Uh the building's about a hundred and twenty feet wide, so it'd be some some amount shorter than that in our estimation right now.
We also found out a couple of years ago when we tried to do some improvements to that basement parking area that there is settling and the the ground that it's built on was previously, and you can see in the old the old pictures, an old sawmill. So um that this the degrading of the those fibers and that material causes settling in that area in conjunction with its really close proximity to the river. So that could potentially pose some structural engineering issues with the foundation if we were to expand. But again, those are knowns. We we are aware of that. Um Aeta, interestingly enough, um merged with Collins, which was the architectural firm that actually had the original design on the building, so they have all the original um plans to the building, structural plans, and then also the the known intent to for future expansion. Um so that they are well aware of that, and we've had ongoing discussions about that, too. It just will be a challenge. It could be done?
So instead of going horizontally, going vertically, we wouldn't run into that? Other than maybe the settling in the basement, might have to put in some micropiling to.
Yeah, I'm 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 sure there'd be a lot of structural engineering that needs to be looked at before it was considered. And there's always, of course, the old jail and retrofitting that area as well, but it may be cost prohibitive as well, so. Lots of things to consider.
What Sean just mentioned, you know, there is a third floor abandoned jail, we call it, uh which it completely is, um abandoned. Um and it's a lot of rebar, a lot of concrete um that would have to be removed and restructured. And um they did when they closed it, they did um essentially close it and walk away uh with the exception of um kind of close uh closing off some plumbing and things that were causing problems for the other floors. And so I think all of the plumbing would have to be redone. It was, they were, it was closed off with like foam insulation spray type of uh, yeah, so there's no going back on on that. Um that'd have, that would have to be redone.
Every day's.
But it still might be a cheaper option than building new.
It might be.
We did get some early numbers from, I don't know if it's Milig or?
I think it was Milig.
Really that about renovating that fourth floor and it was cheaper, I think, per square foot to build new to compare to renovating, but it was just one floor and instead of building a new justice center, that might be an option for for the county.
Um Commissioner Farrell as well, Commissioner Dahl is is aware of this piece, but um we are working with USDA on trying to secure some rural funding to support either upgrades to the existing building or um future building a new building. Um and they had actually done a couple of different tours with us about a year ago now, and pretty much said, um you need a feasibility study and then you can go from there. Um so that's the other important piece of this is um it's almost a requirement. I I wouldn't say that they're requiring it because they can't guarantee grant fundings because it is competitive, but we would need this at least to explain to them why we'd be going a certain direction and and the, you know, the reasoning behind it.
Okay.
So so Milig is kind of a, we're looking at energy-type factors for that.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I know there's energy codes coming to retrofits from building, and Aeta is more safe-to-save mechanical type stuff?
I would say civil and structural, right? Structural, excuse me, not civil. Structural engineering.
Actually tell us what we can do with the building and what it would cost.
Correct.
We want to do with the building.
Correct. And you know, to just kind of what I would call the elephant in the room is, well, we're putting all this money into this HVAC system and electrical upgrades at the hall, you know, so why would we do that if we're going to build something new? And when we were first exploring doing that project, that was one of the main questions we had, and that's why Milig provided us a lot of information to try to make that determination. And it pretty much came down to whether we stay in that building for the next five to ten years or the next thirty years, we have to do something with with that. So or if we sell the building to make it marketable and sellable, we would have to do those upgrades. So that was kind of what at the time I think the board decided on and gave direction to move forward on the HVAC side of it, knowing.
Cost of us anyway. You brought in the outside unit to one summer.
Correct.
That was to the tune of almost nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, and the and the yearly maintenance and upkeep on it is over half a million as it is, so with all that considered, yeah, so.
I believe we've worked on Aeta a few times on this fee proposal about getting costs down. I can't remember what it was originally.
I looked at it before I came, and it was three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and that they wanted.
For what?
For for this feasibility study.
So we kept working on it to get the number down because we knew we we didn't want to come to the board with a number that high. And so we we uh took a few of the requirements out, but also just kept working on on price, saying we were not going to this. And we actually got to a number now we felt comfortable coming to the board since it's in the one forty, one forty range?
Yeah.
Yeah, one fifty range. Less than half of originally was afforded to us.
Yeah. Does that accomplish everything we need to get accomplished?
Again, it's really, um what I'm hoping to do is provide, again, the community, the board and and our and us just the factual information to help help the board and staff make a decision. And I think this will accomplish that, to answer your question. I think it's a tough, it's going to be tough. I think that I I don't know that it should be, you know, all of all of the board's decision. It's going to be expensive. It's going to be political. Um you know, it's just going to be a lot, and so we wanted to be able to provide kind of an unbiased um opinion to the board and to us and the community and let them know what we're working with and dealing with here to try to, to try to make the right decision, the most cost-effective decision.
Bigger than the three of us that work out a lot, a lot bigger.
And and yeah.
I don't want to put that burden on you guys to make a decision. That might be a hundred fifty, two hundred million dollars.
What's your timeframe on this, do you think?
Oh, that's a great question. This, hmm, I wonder if it, I don't know that it uh, when I went over it again this morning, I don't know that it actually. Yeah, they don't have a timeline, but that's something that, that's a great question, and I'll come back with that next week. I'll reach out to him. Actually, I'll see him this afternoon at the Annex, so I'll touch base with him.
The only reason I I ask, and I doubt it's this short, but when we're back in Washington DC, I'll be asking CFM to get us another meeting with
Mm-hmm.
with them.
No, that'd be fantastic, yeah, with USDA. Yeah, that'd be great.
So Kathy C or Kelly, so you know they're coming to the Annex, Aeta is this afternoon, but I also asked them to swing by your lobby to take a look at that. I gave them your the drawing and passed it on yesterday, and so they want to look at it in person, get us some estimates back.
So yeah, so hopefully you guys have an opportunity to review it, and then I'll be back next week and we can kind of go over any questions or anything else that's come up, and I'll have a an idea on the timeline at that time, too.
You want to take some time and look it over at what's your comfort zone, Steve?
Oh, I'm good. Go for it.
Yeah, I am, too.
Okay, oh, okay. Yeah, that's no problem. I can still come back with the timeline if.
Yeah, I'd I'd come back with the timeline because Commissioner Rader will be here probably next week. I think Commissioner Farrell's.
I'll be gone.
Yeah.
Okay, well, what I can do is have more of an official document to have the chair sign, as long as you guys are okay with that. And then Commissioner Rader can also, I'll I'll give him the same information again, of course, but can chime in.
We'll throw him a rope and get him up to speed.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah.
Thank you.
And I will switch out with Mr. Rowey.
I've come prepared today to discuss any of your questions. Sorry for last week, I was not prepared.
Well, yeah. I think a lot of them got answered. I I pulled, I I printed the the bill that was done in two thousand twenty-one just to to look it over.
Yeah, um some of the questions I think last week were around um the known projects that were going into there. Um reviewing some of the um documents here, you know, they they had talked about about five hundred and ten million dollars of known infrastructure improvements, sorry, known uh projects, including the Austin Point Terminal. And then they listed an additional approximately three hundred million between nine separate other projects. We did not have any more detail associated with that.
Yeah, they're they're pretty vague on on projects down there, and I don't know how they're going to get them that whole area has ingress and egress issues. I mean, everybody knows that. Unless they're going to helicopter a minute now, I don't know what they're going to do.
And 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 also, they, you know, discussed uh infrastructure improvements um to tune of three hundred and seventy-three million dollars of those. Um totaling between a hundred and thirteen of transportation, sixty, a hundred and sixty-eight utilities, uh sixty-five million in property development. Um and not including some of the most critical areas that are known to be the bottlenecks of the woodland bottoms, in my opinion.
Yeah. I I agree, and this is my own personal opinion. It just feels like a money grab to me. You know, I'm not really I'm struggling with this whole thing, why if they're a port like like Port of Clama or Port of Longview, they're basically a development company. If they can't operate without subsidies from the taxpayer, then I'm guessing they need new leadership or they need somebody that can figure out how they do that, because others certainly do it.
So according to their documents as well, they expect to have about seventy-one million dollars of property taxes redistributed. Of that, sixteen and sixteen point two, Kelly, current expense.
Us and another fourteen from your roads.
Right, and if we were to look.
Million from Calatwan.
Yeah, um across the fire districts, it's thirty-three million.
Yeah.
If we were to look at our road funding and the grants and how we're able to leverage that, the road fund alone would be about a hundred and ten million dollars of projects across the county.
Yeah. And I don't when when I first heard this, I was thinking, well, if it's like a PF, PFD, you got this set out here, you get as long as if they have debt to service, if they're doing improvements, they get this rebate from the the state. It's not a new tax, it's a rebate from the state, and it pays the payments for that, what you're doing. But this isn't anything like this. This takes from everybody else in the county and redirects it to them. And then the rest of us need to make up that shortfall somehow.
I can't believe the legislature passed this creature.
Uh, I know, and it has, uh the more people I talk to, and Savannah gave me a name and I'll contact him tomorrow, but the more of people I've talked to who really don't like this thing, they don't know how legislature did it. I know we looked up in our, in the nineteenth, our two representatives voted against it, our senator voted for it, but he's also a port commissioner, so.
Yeah, I uh I reported on it last night at the monthly meeting across the street. It's Republican headquarters and nobody knew, had a clue what I was talking about, so I kind of gave them the rundown on it and uh upset the whole room, to say the least.
Same at Casrock. Casrock, Monday night, I uh sit down with their council and they gave me time to talk on it. They hadn't heard a word about it, and they're going, what? Cause it, and they won't hear a word about it because it doesn't directly affect them, although I would make the case that it certainly indirectly affects you.
For sure.
So.
Sean has a list of questions he, you know, that he doesn't have answers to. And I'm sure you guys have a few questions you probably would ask. Is there a chance or opportunity to have port? You know, session like a.
Commissioner Rader is trying to work with them to get a workshop up, up here. If, if they can't attend, I think it would be on our best interest to hold one no matter what.
Absolutely.
Just so we can, we can talk about it. And, and I know I have a contact with Calhoun that may come up and, and speak on that too. Because this is a. I don't mind you doing things, but you just can't take from everybody else and expect them to subsidize your stuff. And it just, it doesn't sit right with me. So.
Yeah, I understand why.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
We don't have any other legal recourse that I can see.
No, and, and that's the other. This is nothing that gets voted on. It doesn't come to the county. It doesn't go to the voters. It doesn't do any of that. It goes to Department of Treasury up in Olympia. And if whatever signs off on their plan, it's a done deal. And all of a sudden we're going, what?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It completely bypasses any valuation and input from the public.
They're supposed to hold two public meetings. I haven't got the dates on those yet, but I know there's quite a few people that want to be notified when that happens.
You know, their little write-up that, that we have says March and April this year.
Yeah.
Is when they expect us to have it, have it happen. But they don't have to pay any attention to that. I mean, all they have to do is go on record that they had it.
Right. So I think what you're hearing is that we're probably going to fight this thing.
As much as we can.
Thank you. So you guys have miscellaneous items for our team?
No, that was a nice function for Gary yesterday.
Thank you. Yeah, it was. Good turnout.
I told him at the end, I said, they couldn't talk you into 50 years?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, tomorrow's his last day. So, but certainly be available. He swung by the office last night to visit before he left.
Forty-two years, that's a lot of service. That's pretty commendable.
It is.
I guess there was plus a couple more years that he was what, summer help or something?
Summer help. So that's very, very cool. You don't see that very often anymore. People tend to move around.
Correct. Yeah. He says it's just a phone call away. So I'm sure we'll have a few, a few phone calls. Not much knowledge, but he, we have a great replacement that's been in that office for a while. Then they've been training for a spell together and we appreciate you guys. You guys gave us, gave us the green light to have some time for them to be together. So we appreciate that. So it's helped out a lot. Thank you.
Anything else for these guys? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, we can take a recess till 2:30 since we advertised it at 2:30. We need to start at 2:30 with, with the PFD.
Yep.
So we will just recess till that point in time.
Okay.
Okay. We're back. We'll come out of recess and head into our two thirty with the Public Facilities District. And Bob, I'll just turn it over to you and let you run with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl. It's our pleasure. We appreciate the opportunity for the, to have a workshop with the board. I know we've all met with you a little bit off and on relative to the, to the master plan and what we're doing, but we wanted to have an opportunity to really dive into a little bit more. And there are some, actually some action items at the end of this presentation that we'd like to discuss and get in direction with, with you all. So we appreciate the opportunity. I want to start out, maybe I'm going to ask the board and staff of the PFD maybe just to introduce themselves. I'm not sure you know all of them. So Sergeant Claire?
Claire Howden, board member. Paris State Public Facilities District Chair and Board Member of College. Here about that center director. Saul Green State of Miami. Kirk Rollins, board member. Robert E S D, board member. I'm Nick Hedrickson, board member.
Thank you. And yeah, I guess I should introduce myself. I'm Bob Gregory. I'm the project manager for the Public Facilities District and taken a little poll here recently and trying to drive some of the day-to-day stuff relative to the project. So can we start the presentation? Go ahead and go to slide two. Thank you. So today we wanted to, we got twelve different tasks, I guess, or elements here of the presentation that we want to go through. Talk about the strategic plan, master plan, our stakeholder process that we went through in developing the master plan. Then roll into the, some of the existing conditions and site analysis of the existing site as it is. We did a market analysis in the master plan, so we want to share with you a little bit about what the market talks about. We also did some benchmarking with other Johnson Consulting who helped us with the master plan. Was familiar with some other facilities, so we benchmarked how the Callas County Event Center might compare to them. Then we have some recommendations that came out of the, these various analysis. And then we want to go into then the actual master plan and talk about the site concept options that we have, are moving forward with. We do have this in a phasing plan, so we'll go through the phasing plan a bit with you. Then we also want to touch on the, some of the economic and fiscal impact estimates that Johnson Consulting did based on their experiencing and against some of the benchmarking that we had. And then at the end, we have some conclusions of the master plan. And then we talk, and again, we'd like to talk about some implementation and next steps that we need to partner with the county on. So next slide, please. So the first thing we did back in two thousand twenty-two, the PFD embarked on a twenty-two, what we call a strategic plan. And really see that was really the broader picture, objectives, policy type of decisions. Key elements of what we, we as a board wanted to see and envision the master plan being and, and the event center being. So the four main elements that came out of that then was we, we want the event center to be a vibrant place that has amenities that foster community pride. And a lot of, we have a lot of local users in this area there, and that was a very important element and objective in this. We want to also have the ability to leverage public funding and the assets that we have already in the community. And so that was a key element. Then we want to seek partners, partnerships to realize and sustain the vision. The PFD can't do it alone. Obviously, the county is a big partner in, in the event center, but we think there's other community partnerships out there. Maybe state and federal even partnerships down the road that we might want to go after. And then finally, and probably this is the key thing that I think you'll really see as we get through this is we really think, see the event center as an opportunity to create and implement a coordinated destination-based economic development strategy. A place where we can really have a core, a key economic strategy or element there that actually benefits Longview, Kelso, and you know, the, the region, the urban area in this area. So that was, and that was really key. And I think as we go through this, you'll really see that in the preferred plan. Next slide. So relative to the strategic plan, we had two main objectives that came out of that. We want to maintain the core function of the event center and facilitate the annual fair. And that's something as we move forward, we want to make sure that we are very mindful of that. Those are important. The fair is very important to this community and region, as well as the event center has really become a main anchor of, of the event center facility there. And then the other big strategic objective then was we want to increase this to have year-round events, attendance, revenue generation, both operational revenue for the facility, but also economic revenue for our local businesses and that. And again, we want this to then have a significant impact, economic impact in the region, drive economic development and tourism. So those are the key objectives that came out of the strategic plan. And then on the right-hand side, that just talks about the process. I'm actually going to go through those steps and talk about the process that we evolved through to the master plan. Next slide. So starting out the master plan, we, critical that we have stakehold, stakeholder engagement in the process. We really had four elements of our stakeholder involvement and outreach. We had the keys, we involved the key stakeholders and included current event, users of the event center. The equestrian groups are a big user of the facility. Government leaders, a lot of the local governments and that utilizes facility for events and that. The business community, obviously lots of business use that center for various events. The event center staff, again, we reached out to them and Johnson talked to them and made sure they had a good understanding of what's, what the challenges are there. The hoteliers, again, and I think you'll see that as a common theme throughout this. And then educational institutions, so we reached out to the school districts and how might this event center facilitate or enhance the school districts. We had workshops with the board of the city of Longview. We actually did a parallel track. They did the Mint Valley Racket Complex. They also did a study. So we were in partnership with them and Johnson Consulting helped them along the way. So that was two projects that were running parallel. We talked to focus groups, sports communities, business community, event center users. The entertainment community was another focus group that we wanted to talk to. And then the last thing we did is we did a survey and I'll, I'll go into the survey results a little bit later, but next slide, please. So out of the event center users, these were the conclusions or outcomes that we got from them under, and we really have that in four categories. What are the assets of the event center? And you'll, you'll see, I'm not going to read every one of those there, but I think, you know, the location, the flexibility of space, the pricing. I mean, those were key assets that people identified. Some of the challenges, the event center is understaffed. And I will tell you that they've made great strides. Kim has made great strides at that in the last couple of years. And I think we're, she, she probably say they're maybe first time she's at full staff right now. But I think that was identified as a, as a real challenge for users. The outdated technology at the event center, and we'll talk about that more in the implementation. No air conditioning, the climate control in the building came up a lot from users of the facility that, that was a deterrent for, for using the facility and uncomfortable in a certain event. Wayfinding and access to the event center actually came up in several different focus groups about how do you, how do you get there and that. And then maintenance of the event center was come up also. The other one was events and programs to accommodate, again, a multi-purpose horse arena, smaller conventions would need a hotel. I think you'll see this hotel theme come up a lot throughout the, the outdoor events, soccer, the Columbia Theater were identified as other events. And then the, the vision was that, again, can we bring in more events outside of the area, Portland, Seattle type of events, bring people in. More family, community events, which, which is a strong user base of that right now. Equestrian facilities and then more breakout space for larger events. Next slide. These were the summary of things that came from the entertainment stakeholders. Again, from the, the challenges that they saw was the booking and availability of the event center for some events. They need some additional small space in the event center. Challenges, again, the temperature, climate control came up from this group that the cost of using that, the event center for entertainment industry, that was identified as something from their point of view. The marketing and information availability and then food, there's what, pretty limited food options. We do have the caterer onsite there, but interested in other food options. Desired events, again, more nonlocal events, a common theme from the previous group. Maybe a tiered rental price that would accommodate local versus regional type events. Again, more food options. And then the overall market needs, public gallery space, lodging. Lodging comes up again as a, a challenge that we need to have. And then better restaurant options in, adjacent to or in the proximity of the event center. Next slide. This came from the, this is the outcomes from the business stakeholder discussions. Again, the key accounting drivers that they, you know, the manufacturing, porch industry, tourism, entertainment and outdoor recreation were came from the business stakeholder. Some of the assets was the location, the staff, the indoor capacity from the business, business community was actually considered to be an asset. And then the facility quality recognized as a, as a quality. Believe it or not, that facility is twenty-two years old and, but yet it's, it's been really well maintained by staff and, and the PFD and it's looked as a good asset. Some of the challenges that they, business community identified, hotel infrastructure again. The pricing for some businesses, I always felt it was a, a challenge. Outdated technology, again, I know Kim and her staff have a lot of the use, the use of audiovisual, sound tech, technology that we need to make some improvements in that area at the event center. Wayfinding and access came up again with this group. And then the marketing and branding came from the business stakeholders group. Sports stakeholders, this is their outcomes. Again, a real need for indoor facility, multiple courts. The outdated facility or updated facility, again, to draw in the younger families using the facility. Sports fields was identified as a need. Some challenges they identified was some of the community has a resistance to change and a way of doing, doing, proving in those type of events. Lodging constraints. I think you'll see this everywhere. Lodging is a big challenge at the event center. And then new, new events that they, that they thought was maybe live music and, and auto type events could be another use from the sports community. And then the last outreach then was with survey responses. And we did a, a survey, an online survey, city of Longview, leave Callas County. We had it posted on the website. Surprisingly, we had six hundred and forty-nine responses, which with surveys is actually a, a pretty good response rate. And the, you know, we had, and there's a, the demographics are listed there, but we had people, ninety-two percent were respondents within Callas County. Eighty percent of those were long-term residents. And then we had about what, twenty-eight percent of those were the young, in the range of twenty-five to seventy-four and then thirty-five to forty-four groups, so. Next slide. This is some of the findings that we came out of the survey. Again, more opportunities for year-round activities and recreation. Specific things identified was a multi-use indoor, multi-use indoor sports facility and an outdoor complex, maybe adjacent to that. The multi-purpose indoor. A multi-purpose indoor arena was a big need out of the survey. Facility-wide renovation, there was recognition that we need a facility-wide renovation of the existing event center, as well as I think this applies to the floral buildings, the equestrian facilities now, but I think this is something you saw from the surveyors. Again, improved access and wayfinding. And I think this was maybe a little bit of a surprise to us that went through there, but a common theme, again, throughout all the outreach that we did. And then lodging, again. Next slide, please. So then we moved into the existing conditions and site analysis. And again, here's the eight main, main components there. It's a, the event center is highly flexible. Again, we've got the two large spaces there, the small breakout room, so it lends itself for, for good flexibility. There was, there was identified a greater investment is needed, particularly in the Mount St. Helens room and the equestrian arena. Those were two main components. The hotel needs to be added to the campus again. Some cosmetic improvements, and I think again, probably to think about the floral buildings, some of the poultry, stock barns down the way, and then the equestrian facility. The, it was identified that the current staff is lean and ineffective, but need more help with current staff. And again, I think Kim has been able to make great strides with that with the support of the county commissioners and, and that. There's a, there's a strong demand for event space, but it could be diversified. And I think as we talk about some of our recommendations, you'll see diversification is a recommendation there. The financial performance is strong, and I'll just go through some financials, but there's a, we have some growing revenues and with some of the improvements, I think you'll see potential for some significant increase in revenues. And then the rental fee was identified as straightforward, but maybe fees, maybe somewhat lower depending on the market. And again, I think that depends on the different user groups that are using that. I think Kim would tell you she gets, you know, pushback on some of the type of users and then some of the, there's other users that I think it's, actually think it's a good deal and, and that, so. But that's kind of a existing landscape and on the slide there, we actually have the square footage of the facilities, but I wasn't going to go through those. This is just a map then of the existing conditions and the site analysis. Again, you'll see the main entrances are on the north end of Washington Street and on the Seventh Avenue side are our two main entrances. Inside there then is the circulation around the various facilities and events. The green arrows to the left and right of that, that's actually identified. And again, there's a lot of talk about pedestrian access from the event center and again, getting the, if we had the multi-purpose building, the hotel and that, actually having good pedestrian access to, up to West Kelso and some of the commercial retail areas up there, over to Longview, the Banner Cook and downtown Longview, having a good pedestrian access there. And then to the east, there's a pedestrian access to the riverfront. I know the city of Longview has some riverfront development ideas, recreational opportunities there. And so I think again, a, a long-term need would be recreation needs. To the south again is just the connection to Peradale Lane and, and into the RV park. And that's, that's a secondary use. It's not a regular, full-time use. It's not intended in the master plan to be a day-to-day public access use. By the way, please stop me if I'm going too fast. Something will roar through this, so. So the market analysis, these are some of the key findings. The county is rural, but grow quickly. And I think we all know that we're seeing that growth come from the, from the Clark County Portland areas coming up here, and we're starting to see that. We have, we do have low sports and entertainment spending in, in this particular area. Again, our hotel inventory suffers and, but we, we also have the recognition of the strong industrial base and the diversification that we're seeing at the ports and some of our retail and healthcare areas that we are seeing diversification. So key, key findings of the market. The next thing we did then was, this was some benchmarking and Johnson Consulting again had some experience with many of the other facilities. Our board has actually traveled to the Lynn County Event Center, so we have some working knowledge of that. Clark County, I think, close proximity, but then the other two that Johnson identified that they thought would be applicable for benchmarking again was Deshues County Expo Center. And then one in Bozeman, Montana, again, they worked with those people in Bozeman and they thought that that was a comparable facility that they use in our benchmarking for the Callis County Event Center. Here's then some of the benchmark results there. And the first quadrant there, this is a three-hour radius. So these, some of these data might surprise you, but if you think about it in a three mi, or three, excuse me, a three-hour radius, then I think this data makes a little more sense. So you see population wise, we have a, a pretty comparable, comparable population in a three-hour radius. If you look at that as our market compared to, in fact, Clark County, I guess, is the other one that has a comparable population, but the other ones are actually lower than, than us. Projected population, again, we're pretty comparable all the way across with, with the different benchmarks. Median household income, and again, this one probably surprised us a little bit. You'll see that the median income for the Callis County Event Center is, is actually pretty high there. But again, this is a three-hour radius. It's not just within Callis County that. So think about it in a three-hour radius, but this was probably a surprising number for us. And then the median age, again, in a three-hour radius, it's actually a, a younger demographic of potential market for, for the event center. On the right-hand side then, this is again, a, this is one, data is on a one-mile radius. And again, the hotel inventory, you can see we are very lacking in hotel with constant theme that we've talked about. 12 months occupancy in our hotels. That shows you the different occupancy rates at hotels, both us here, but also there are our comp benchmarks. Clark County facility actually does not have any hotels within a one-mile radius, so no data there. So that's probably an advantage to us relative to competing with them. Then the bottom two is its 12, 12-month average daily rate. And again, this, this information is available from the hotel industry and this shows you the comparable average daily rates for Callis County within a one-mile radius and, and our comps. And then the 12-month revenue for what they call a available room, the 12-month room. So this is different data that we looked at and that's obviously the kind of things that we're sharing with the hotel industry. And believe me, these hotel, hoteliers know this data also, so they know our market and what's around us too. Again, benchmarking against comparable facilities. This just talks about the retail businesses that were within a 10-mile walk. And surprisingly, the Callis County Event Center within a walking distance, 10-minute walk, has a pretty good retail business. You know, the Triangle Center, downtown Longview, West Kelso, that area. The daytime population within, within a 10, 10-minute walk. Actually, there's a, quite a bit of population relative to the other facilities that are, that are around here and that. The distance from nearest major airport, again, PDX for us. The, the second one, the Lynn County, again, they have actually pretty comparable to PDX for Lynn County down in the Albany area. The Bozeman, Montana one had a quite, quite a far-reaching away, or excuse me, that's, that's Deshues County, I'm sorry, for a major airport. And the last one is the Montana comparable. And then in planements, people getting on and off of the planes, again, PDX, no surprise there that Lynn County and us have a, a pretty good comparable there that way. The next category then was comparable facilities relative to large multi-purpose space. And you can see here that the Callis County Event Center is really in real deficit compared to our comparables there. Lynn County had pretty significant event space. I think we were very pleased with that comparison when we saw that, what they had down there and the potential down there. I think, we think that's something to strive for and something to realize that could be very beneficial for us. Clark County, they have a large space there, obviously, and so that's well above us. Deshues County, again, we're pretty deficit to them. And then Gallatin County, we're probably closer to, to what they have there. From the total, and then the comparables relative to total indoor event space, again, we're pretty much lacking three, three of the benchmark areas relative to indoor space. And then you have the Gallatin County Fairgrounds where we're probably pretty comparable to them as far as a benchmark. And then the last one, this is attendance or users of that. You can see the blue bar there then is fair attendance and you can see how we compare there. All of them do have fair events there. Clark County obviously has a significant fair, Clark County Fair and get a, a lot, lot more fair attendance at theirs. Lynn County actually is below their fair attendance is not quite, they actually have two fairs, they have Benton County Fair there too. So that may be a reason that that doesn't, they don't quite have the same affair attendance at the Lynn County facility. And then Gallatin County, again, they do have fair. But the other, the gray bar then represents the non-fair attendance. You can see all the facilities, the fair is, fair is an important element, but the non-fair attendance and events and that is a pretty key component to, to all the benchmark facilities. So the finding, key findings then out of the benchmarking, again, the strengths for the event center, we have a large regional population base to draw from. We have a young and wealthy or again, if you remember the income there, within that 30, 30, excuse me, three-hour radius, we actually have a pretty good demographic there to draw from for potential market. We have a large proximate daytime population. And then adjacent retail restaurants, again, downtown Longview, the Triangle Center, West Kelso, we have actually some, some good strengths there. Our weaknesses, hotel event inventory again, it's a broken record, but we, we know that. The facility size and quality, again, we're, the event center for breakout rooms and that is good, but we're really lacking that indoor multi-purpose space. The non-fair attendance is, is, you know, relatively low to comparable to our benchmarks. And then the revenue stream that we have relative to our benchmarks, we were, is, we're weaker in that area than, than our comparables. So recommendations out of, out of the stakeholders and that, these are the recommendations that Johnson and the board worked through. Renovations of the event center, again, the air conditioning, again, climate control was identified. We needed some additional breakout room. Updated technology again was a common theme. And improved load-in and load-out of the actual facility for people, users of that, loading and unloading further events and bringing equipment in and out. A new hotel, again, was identification. The rooftop bar, I think that came, we, we had a hotel proposal there at one time and they were actually proposing a rooftop bar. I won't say that everybody said we need to have a rooftop bar, but that was, this was reflective of one of the hotel developers that we had been talking to. Equestrian area again, arena, the arena and the area again, is some recommendations that we need to make some improvements there and enhance our attendance and users that. A permanent grandstand stage. There, there are some minor events in the grandstand area there, but I think they bring in a portable stage every now and then, but, but identify and maybe we put a permanent grandstand stage that might provide some more flexibility for the grandstand arena. And then the multi-purpose indoor facility was a major recommendation. Moving on, the community plaza, having some flexible space. And I think this one really was driven by, if we get a hotel, if you want to show you the concept, you're going to show the hotel adjacent to the event, to the existing event center. So having some community's plaza space there that maybe the, can, you know, link those to both the hotel and the event center together. New RV spaces, you do have, for events, you have RV users there, but it's, the facilities needed some significant upgrades and I, and as you know, we're actually embarking on a renovation and expansion of the existing RV space. Additional parking. And again, I think this, I think the parking for the existing event center is, is okay. I think there's some events that do, you have to use the Seventh Avenue side for some of the parking, but for the most part, day-to-day users of the event center, I think we have pretty good parking. But when you do the multi-purpose, you're definitely going to need more parking to accommodate that facility. The floral buildings, potential to remove and maximize the space. I think that, you'll see that's a longer-term recommendation, but something that's been identified. And if we remove them, I think we need to plan on replacing them too, but that's something that identified. And then additional storage, both at the existing event center for a current staff, but just general storage in general at the event center and the fairgrounds area, there's a real deficit of storage space at that facility. Some of the campus recommendations, architectural cohesion, so as we're building new, new facilities, new buildings, trying to have some similar architecture and similar themes and that. The entrance redesign, again, I'll talk about that a little bit more. Wayfinding improvements, again, you saw that comment a lot through our various groups. Make it more of a campus-like environment, you know, you kind of, right now it's a little bit segmented, you kind of got the equestrian down in one area and you've got the event center up there. So try and get some more campus-like environment where it kind of ties that together. And then trail, and then the trail network integration was again, a recommendation relative to a campus-type improvement. And then on the operational side, maintenance improvement rather than replacement. So it's some identification of, taking advantage of maintaining the existing facilities that we do have. And then again, operational staffing expansion to have a dedicated sales, marketing and maintenance workers. And again, I really think the event center has made great progress in that in the last year, in two years. And I think we're in a really good position to, as, as we grow these other facilities with the staff that we have in place now to, to make that work. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but again, we, we actually, when we took at the recommendations, they'd look at three different reason, areas as far as how these facilities, what's driving them. One is mission-driven. You can see many of those were mission-driven. We had a community-driven category there, which one of those facilities would be driven or are more community-driven than they are. And then market-driven. And you'll see the facility that we really think would be drivers in the market. And so they, Johnson broke those out for us and kind of identified those in those different type of categories. This is the site concept then. When we went through the master plan, we actually had three different concepts that we advanced after board discussion evaluating the stakeholder input and that. This is the preferred concept that the, the board has, came to consensus on, and this is what we're recommending that we advance. The, the yellow on there, I don't find just some site landscaping, buffering enhancements, that type of thing. You'll see the conference center there, again, that's really renovation, a modest expansion, the 3,500 square feet expansion of the event center. The hotel on the, to the right of the event center is where that site there. Again, we have the Public Development Authority, the county has done a land swap with the city of Longview and the Public Development Authority does have a 1.8 acre, eight acre partial there for the hotel there. So that's identified in the master plan. Then in the white area is the equestrian area, the poultry and stock barns, that area, the grandstand, those are all again, recommendations in there. And then on the left-hand side, that is the multi-purpose over on the grassy area on the west side of Seventh Avenue. And that's where the multi-purpose facility is recommended to be facilitated. Again, we, that's about seven acres. So you have a, you know, 40,000 square feet, that's one acre, that take that one acre for the multi-purpose. Obviously, you're going to need to improve that, you want to have improved parking and that for the facility. But we also think then the balance of that site, there's still, still some other room over there for some future uses and potential there on the site, on the, on the west hand, west side of Seventh Avenue. On the bottom there then, that's where the RV park is identified. And again, the county, the county has granted a million-dollar start for a renovation of the rural economic development program for the RV park. We're in, we're in concept design of that right now and we anticipate making some physical improvements to that yet this year and into 2026. In the master plan, this is the numbers that you will see in the master plan for phase one again. Phase one again includes the event center, the expansion of the conference center, new, new RV park, some storage and replacement of the boneyard, the wayfinding signage and the site improvements are all part of the, in the phase one. We, in every one of these things, they include the soft cot. So those are the architectural permitting, environmental, all those type of things. So all those numbers are carried across in all the different phases. Phase two is the event center, or excuse me, the multi-purpose building is that. And then phase three is the equestrian facilities. And then phase four is the demolition of the, potential demolition of the floral building and the trail system there. So this is the phasing plan that we put together at a high level there and that. I will tell you that master plan cost estimates are always high level, have a lot of contingencies, a lot of that as you start drilling down into the actual improvements there, those numbers get refined and, and hopefully come down from below that. In fact, when we talk about phase one, you'll see that we've actually, that cost is actually lower than what you'll see in the master plan level cost estimates. Here, I'm going to, for the multi-purpose, we have a, Johnson provided us a video of a facility down in Texas, and this gives you an idea of what the multi-purpose building could be. And again, this is not what we're proposing here, but I think it's a really good And again, this is not the, what we're proposing here, but I think it's a really good rendition of what it might look like. So I'm gonna see if she could play this for us and take a look at that. Excuse the marketing slides for Texas. Again, I, I think that, you know, the purpose of that is to really show you what a, the flexibility you can really have in a multipurpose building. And I, I know from my personal experience and I think Kelly's had some experience. I have a granddaughter and kids that have played volleyball and ba, and basketball up and down the west coast, throughout the northwest, throughout the Midwest area. And I think, you know, I think that, that is a big driver of, of that, you know, you can make it that kind of space for, for those kind of tournaments and turn around and, and, and have an auto show in there or a large conference there. And I think that's really a vision and we think, that's why I think this board came to conclusion. We really think this could be a huge economic driver and, and potential to really expand the use and benefit that facility. So, so again, it's just an example, but I think as, as we dive into our phase two, we'll want to take a look at that and put together something like that. But something that's, you know, replica of what we would want to do here. Next slide, I, I have some financial slides in here. I'm not going to go through all these numbers there and I'm just going to highlight a couple of things in, in that. And what I, I guess what I draw your attention to is year one and then year five in all these slides. And the point of these things is year five is really that, is that horizon year when we would have the equestrian facility and the multipurpose building online. And maybe whether it's year five or year seven or year three, depending on how fast we get to. I think as you start looking at that year five, there's signing, starts to give you a feel for the, you know, the increase in number of events, the increase in number of users, the financials and that type of thing. And so it gets, starts giving you a feel there. These are projections and this is based on Johnson Consulting's experience with comparable facilities on when they worked at. But again, based on their experience, I think they're trying to show you what the potential is for the Calis County Event Center if we did that. This first one is just on a event demand. And so you can, year one is really kind of, is the benchmark, is Kim provided them what we were doing at the current time there. And then as these other facilities come online, you can see the, you know, the potential growth that we could realize. You know, they've broken down into the equestrian ag vents and then the sports in the multipurpose building and that. So again, this is in the master plan also that, but I didn't want to go through all the numbers, but I kind of wanted you to take a look at that year five there as we go through these. And I think that kind of gives you a sense for how this could work and what the benefit is. Next slide, please. This one is the attendance potentials. And again, I think you look at the equestrian in year five and look at the, how that multipurpose building bringing in sports events, festivals, those type of things. Look at, look at how those numbers can really jump up if we had a, a multipurpose building there to draw those kind of events. Uh, this one, this one is actually, you know, you always think about sustainability. And so this is a, a projected they did to take a look at operating revenues and that. And the two thousand twenty two is actually based on the current year. Then they projected ahead, we're actually projecting deficits in year one and year two. I'm not sure, we haven't updated those, I'm not sure we're actually there. But again, you can really start seeing when that year five, when the multipurpose event comes on, the equestrian things start coming on. You can really see how the positive cash flow for operations can really potentially grow there and, and really gives you a bright picture of sustainability and the ability to operate that facility. And, you know, and, and again, part of those revenues are rents and leases. So you're going to have user fees, people, you know, tournament fees, those type of things come in there. It's actually users of the events, those kind of things. So, but I think that was really, and that's a bit, real concern of the board and I'm sure you also, the PFD board, but you know, the ability to sustain it. If we're going to build these things, can we sustain them? And are there, is there the market and the revenues there to do that? And I think this was a way to look at demonstrating that need and ability. And this one was the, oh, this is economic impact, overall economic impact to the community. You know, so you have direct spending, people using restaurants, hotels, spending money in the community and that. And this is again, to, to demonstrate that, it shows you the potential increase for sales tax revenues. You know, property tax, B and O tax revenues, those type of things. Again, those are revenues that come into the local governance, that school districts that we can turn around and use for, again, for our services that we need to provide there too. So again, having those facilities provides a significant economic impact and benefit to our community and our region. So conclusions, again, remember objective one was to sustain the existing facility. So again, the, the preferred master plan, this meets those objectives for that. The new hotel, the equestrian arena facilities, the community plaza, the conference center improvements and maintaining the core function of the event center and facilitating the annual fair. All of those things will allow us to continue to meet that objective. And then objective number two was again, make this an economic impact driver in the community. Increase the year round events, attendance, revenue generation. Again, our recommended master plan, we believe meets that study objective due and provides all those outcomes if we were to be able to realize those facilities. And, and again, these were strategic plan objectives that we started out early again. The, the first one, the first objective of vibrant places by doing the community plaza and the multipurpose facility, enhance connectivity. This meets that objective. Leveraging public assets, we have, again, we having synergies with downtown Longview and West Kelso. We believe we leverage that objective. Seeking partnerships to retain, retain the vision. We, we think there's some opportunities for sponsorships out there. I think there's other, I think we have a partnership with Calis County to, we need your partnership with allowing us to advance the, the master plan. That's a partnership. And then again, making this a destination based location, a new hotel, a conference center upgrades, a multipurpose. We believe those are the key components of realizing that economic development strategy. I'm gonna, so, so now we're getting into implementation and I, I was gonna, there's, this is where we really need the partnership of the county and, and we need to work together. And, and in order to start advancing this master plan, these are some of the key steps. So I was gonna ask Bronson to, to maybe go through this, some of the key legal steps that we need to do. And then I'll close with some of the cost things.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Bronson Potter. I'm a lawyer and I represent the, I represent the Calis County Public Facilities District. Before I jump into these next steps, just some background first, myself. I was the chief civil deputy prosecuting attorney for Clark County. And when I did that, I represented the Clark County Public Facilities District. And I did the legal work on the development of the Clark County Event Center. I then became the city attorney for the city of Vancouver. About the Calis County Event Center and the Public Facilities District, the Calis County Board of Commissioners formed the Public Facilities District, which is a municipal corporation. It was formed in nineteen ninety nine. And the county and the PFD have worked together on the construction, maintenance, improvements, operation of the event center for over twenty years under the terms of interlocal agreement. There are two sources of revenue that the PFD has to support the event center. One is what we call a retained sales tax, and I'll explain what that is. And the other is a voter approved one percent lodging tax. So the retained sales tax. In Kelso, you have a sales tax that's eight point one percent. Six and a half percent goes to the state and one point six is local. The retained sales tax is authorized by state law. And it takes a small slice of the sales tax revenue that would go to the state and it keeps it in Calis County. So one third of one percent of the sales tax that would otherwise go to the state is imposed by the PFD and it stays here. Now, one third of one percent doesn't sound like very much, but in twenty twenty four, that generated over a million dollars of revenue. And the lodging tax generated over two hundred thousand in twenty twenty four. So you take that and you go over a period of twenty years, which is how long they've been in the place, and it adds up to a pretty good sum of money.
Just a quick question on, on that. So just so I'm very clear, so it's, it's sales tax that's generated within our county.
Correct.
It goes to the state and then it gives us this back. So is it, is it fair to say is, as economic development grows and more sales tax, if you do these things and some of this brings in more sales tax, it, it's a, it's a correspondent measure?
Yeah, that, that's true. I just was looking at some of the numbers the other day. At two thousand and eighteen, that was seven hundred thousand on the retained sales tax. And over six years, it's grown to over a million. So as you, you know, have more economic activity.
I got you. That generates another question. You probably don't have the answer to this because it just came to mind. We, we, we've kind of looked at the sports complex because we've seen what the hub has done up in Centaria. Have, have they tracked that? I mean, has it brought in more business that they've actually gotten more back? I don't even know if that's an answer you, you have.
You're right, I, I don't have the answer to that.
I, that's more of a curiosity thing to me.
So there's two statutes that authorize this retained sales tax and another one that authorizes the lodging tax. Both of those statutes restrict what the money generated by the taxes can be used for. And they can only be used for PFD facilities and the, and the PFD regional center, which is what the event center is. It's a regional center. So moving forward, I'm going to jump into these next steps now. What we need to do if we want to go forward with the phase one, which is the improvements to the event center. And the planning for phase two is we need to obviously first come to an agreement on what are these improvements going to be? What's in, what's out, what's a cost? Near term, what we're looking for is in the, by April, end of April timeframe, the county finance committee to come to the board of county commissioners with a recommendation on whether or not bonds should be issued for the phase one improvements.
And she's been, she's been talking with us about that.
Pardon me?
She's been talking with us about that already.
Good, good, okay. So, you know, we recently, just last week, hired a firm called Parametrics to serve as an owner's representative for the phase one design build and, and design of phase two. So we're, we're moving down the road and we just need to make sure that the county is moving down the road with us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now you can, you can really only bond what that rebate will debt service, right?
Well, I mean, you can bond for whatever you want to pay, but the, the revenue generated by the PFD, those two taxes is sufficient to cover the cost of the bonds for the phase one improvement.
I guess that's where I was going. If we were seeing increased revenues, once they start having some of these facilities built, if you'd have more coming in and you could bond at a higher rate and do some of your projects.
Yeah, if the PFD were doing it itself, issuing bonds, there would be higher coverage requirements. There would be a higher interest rates. And the effect of those is that we could probably only bond for about seven million, which wouldn't be enough for the phase one improvements. The county could bond for twelve million, which would cover that cost.
Right.
Yeah. So what we're then looking for going down on the calendar a little bit by end of June is pretty much a commitment from the county that it is or it isn't going to issue the bonds. The interlocal agreement that I talked about that we entered into back in two thousand and three would need to have some updates to talk about the new financing and talk about the new improvements that are going to be undertaken, to talk about the design of phase two. Because again, we're going to be spending PFD revenue on the design of phase two and we can only do that if it's a PFD facility. So we'll need to have the interlocal modified to cover that as well as a leaf, a lease for the footprint of where the multipurpose facility would sit. Because we, we need to be able to prove or show that these are in fact PFD facilities.
And where are you wanting to put the multipurpose is kind of in that space in front of the horse arena?
Across, it's across Seventh Avenue.
Oh, it's across Seventh Avenue, kind of where that little storage building is?
Um, farther, farther north side. We're trying to get it on the northern end of that property. So it's, you know, almost across the street from the current event center. So we had one of those events that active bull facility, do that, you'd have some, some level of connectivity and adjacency to that. And if we go back to that concept, I could probably go back and talk to you a little more.
So, once we have these indications that the county is on board with the phase one improvements and, and doing the financing and will provide the revenue for that. The PFD will undertake a design build project for phase one and will manage the construction of the facility. And of course, will continue to collect the retained sales tax and the lodging tax to cover the bond debt payments. That pretty much covers the next steps.
Next slide, then, this, the next slide, this is just a master schedule in that we put together. Again, it incorporates the dates that Bronson had shared with you, but you can see that we are, we have just hired a owner's representative to help us through the design build process. We're going to maybe do a design build, more traditional design.
Yeah.
Positive entries, some timing issues. So we're, we're getting ready to start that process right now. In order to do the design build process, you have to go to the state project review committee, they call them. It's, it's a process created by state. It's a process created by state statute. We have to take our project up there and get that approved. So we're getting some parking on that right away. But then we will parallel that with our few processes before the design-build team. Our vision is that the design-build team is going to help us with Phase 1 and Phase 2. We're gonna get a budget. We cannot be spending any money or any resource on Phase 2. And that sort of, so we can get this general agreement done. So we hire that design-build people and have to utilize them for Phase 2.
Bob, do you mind going back to the map? Do you mind going back to the map? I'm just trying to get clear. Where I'm going with this is we have an aging Hall of Justice, and we only have so many different pieces of property where we can put that type of thing. And I'm just trying to make sure we're not overlapping, and we have to make some kind of decision.
Can't remember what slide number that is. You want that master, that preferred concept slide? Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Is that?
Yeah. So again, you'll see on the west side of 7th Avenue, that's your 7th Avenue field. That's seven acres there. And you'll see the multipurpose building is on the north end of that. And then, and that's about, again, that's 40,000 square feet, so that's one acre, more or less. And then you, so then you have the balance of the six acres to, you know, accommodate the parking for that multipurpose building. And again, we've identified that there's actually probably some additional space there for other needs down there. But, you know, if you get the multipurpose building there, and have the fair going on and all that at one time there, you'll fill that whole area up with parking there during fairtime and that. But the fair is, you know, four or five days a week, I think, the majority of the time. But we also envision that multipurpose building. It's gonna have that parking lot pretty full, too, during that, so. But we're not encroaching over on the Hall of Justice or on the east side at all. Everything's on the west.
Yeah, I just, and I've sat with you long enough. You know, I'm a believer in putting that building up. I just know we have duties as a county, too. And I just kind of make sure we don't overlap and hurt each other.
And again, that's why we need to, in this interlocal agreement process, we really need to sit down and talk about specifically what we need to lease for the building and that type of thing. And that's why it's important that we have those discussions sooner rather than later.
Perfect.
Yeah. Slide 37, if we can.
One other study that has to be done for us to go forward with this project, and that is we have to do an independent feasibility study. And that is contracted for by the State Department of Commerce. So they look at, you know, what is this Phase 1 project? Is it feasible? They don't stop the project, but they do review it and make a determination on this feasibility.
What are they looking for? Will it pay for itself or something like that? Or economic type things? Oh, I see. Okay.
That's built into, that is built into our process. So this slide is on the cost financing right now. And I, again, remember the master plan had probably, I think, a range of 17 to 24 for Phase 1. This is the Phase 1 project that we're, that we are proposing to advance right now. And you, the, again, the improvements to the event center, that's out of the master plan. The expansion of the conference center, that's out of the master plan. The storage wayfinding signings, that number's out of the master plan. The site, probably the biggest difference between the master plan estimate and this is the onsite, offsite improvements. We're looking at about $1.5 million. Part of those site improvements that were in the master plan was the new entryway. Again, remember that you've given us, awarded us a $500,000 grant, so we're already doing the entryway. Part of that was the RV, or the RV park. Again, you've got another project on there. So we've, we're actually pulling that out of what we're proposing to finance with the bonds, out of that right now. And I'm very comfortable that we can do a project. And again, that's the beauty of design-build. You tell the design-build team, this is how much money we got. You're not waiting for a bid later on and find out your bids come in higher than that. So we are going to scope, program, and design that facility based on the money that we have available to do it.
I sat through that presentation with you and thought, that's the way to go. Because you know where you're gonna be.
Yeah, yeah. So we're for pretty solid Phase 1. Phase 2, right now, I'm just illustrating, and this is right out of the master plan. We've got some more work done. We gotta program that. First of all, we gotta program that, get the design-build team, and really figure out, how big is the facility? You know, is it 40,000? Is it 25? Is it 50? And we gotta do that. And then we can drive and figure out what it's really gonna cost us to do it. And then we're gonna have to take a step back and figure out, how can we finance that? So we are not financed for Phase 2 right now.
Right.
Next slide, please. This is a slide I just wanted to illustrate, and Bronson touched on this. Our, the county's investment banker that does your bond issue, they prepared this for us. And what this illustration is, this really shows you the potential debts or bonding capacity we have for Phase 1. And the county issued, that's again, if the county issued the bonds. You have a great credit rating. You're putting, you're pledging the full faith and credit of the county, which is a much stronger asset base than the PFD is. So you get a much better rating. So you can really see that the coverage is only 1.25 is what you need to have. So you can see, and based on the sales tax revenue and lodging tax revenue, and actually, this is just based on sales tax. I didn't, you put lodging tax in here. But you can see, based on the annual growth rate of sales tax revenue, they think that we could issue bonds in the amount of almost $13 million. And again, if you remember the previous slide, it was $11 million. So we have the bond capacity. So again, that's why we, it's so advantageous if the county can issue a bond. The right-hand side, again, shows you what, if the PFD had to do it by themselves, we'd have a much lower credit rating on our, because you're gonna have to have a higher coverage factor. And thus, you just have the less money that you can bond as a PFD. And so that's why we're really hoping that we can partner with the county and have your finance committee take a look at this and see if we could issue that. And again, we recognize that the county's pledging your full faith and credit on those. But again, we believe that, based on our past experience with the existing event center, we will generate, have the sales tax revenue available to pay that debt service. And we're not putting any burden on the current county, current expense fund or general fund that to end that. And this would be borne by the PFD and the sales tax revenue we get for the PFD. So, in conclusion, I think the three things that we're really asking the county to consider is to ask your finance committee to convene, take a look at the debt issuance, and come back and make a recommendation if you can support the debt service for the Phase 1 improvements. And again, with our schedule that we have in front of us, we were hoping that this maybe could be accomplished by the middle of April. And then the second part of that, then, is to commence discussions on amending the interlocal agreement to, again, allow for the Phase 1, but also the Phase 2, which, you know, it's gonna expand the definition of the regional event center. And again, to stay on the schedule, based on our schedule of hiring the design-build team and that, we really need to try and accomplish that interlocal agreement work by the end of June of this year. And then concurrently to that, then, that revised interlocal agreement, then, would talk about that debt issuance then, too. And that would be part of the interlocal agreement, that we would agree to issue bonds for the Phase 1 improvements.
Well, I know Deborah's been working with us on number one, so I think we're already working that path. Number two, I'm assuming that's why the attorneys are here. You guys have kind of worked through that? Yeah.
I guess we're just looking, if this makes sense, is it concurrent, you know, on the part of the board? Do you think that path forward makes sense? And, well, and like, I mean, you're not, other than committing to the process right now at this point, but trying to do those timeframes.
Yeah. My colleagues will have their, and I'm probably a little biased, because I sit as the liaison. I've gotten to know you guys, and I've seen the way you've worked, and I see what it's going ahead. So I'd like to see us keep moving down that road. Like I said earlier, I just gotta make sure that we don't commit where we lose anything if we have to do a new Hall of Justice or something of that nature. You just have to be a little cautious of that. But other than that, I like the concept. I think, I think you'll, you can just physically go up and see what it's done in Centaria. I mean, I grew up in Centaria, and I knew what that area used to be. And when they put that in, what it's done. And the numbers, I forget the gentleman's name when we were up chatting with him, are pretty astronomical, what that brings in. So I just think it's a benefit to our community. We're a sports community. We have a lot of people come in and want to do those things. I mean, Kirk can attest to that with the World Series and the different things we do around here, that there's a big demand. So I think you're on, I'm comfortable if you're, but we're catching, some people are trying to get up to speed, which is a little bit more difficult.
Well, we appreciate that. I mean, and our board is, they've been working very hard since 2022 on a strategic plan and a master plan. And they keep saying, Bob, let's go do something and get it done here. We're done with all the master planning and that. But they've been, spent a ton of time on this thing. I think we all feel really good. We've talked, feel we've talked to the stakeholders and the community enough. And we really think the master plan reflects what we have heard and what is feasible and needed in this community. And I know the board is very motivated to champion this thing and move this thing forward with the collaboration we can have with the county to make this happen. With that, we're available for any more questions or any more discussion? Or? I don't know if the board has anything else to add at this point?
Yeah, you gotta be on TV and make sure the mic's on. There's a button somewhere there.
Right in the middle.
All right. I'm Kirk Rowland, a member of the PFD board. And this board is amazing. We are talking about longtime people that love Calis County and Longview Kelso. And like Bob said, it's time. You know, we can think about these things, and we can keep thinking about these things, but we need to do these things. I'm a parent of a sports kid back in the day. He's an adult now, but a lot of my money was spent in other communities. And I would have preferred to have spent them here with some tournaments here. And as you mentioned, we do have a great sports town. We just don't have, you know, great facilities in order to take it to the next level. So, and the other thing about, if there's someone that says, well, just a sports arena? No, we want a versatile space that we can use, not for just volleyball and basketball and pickleball. That'll get some folks excited. That's a hot thing now. But we're talking about auto shows, huge spaces. We could make it so versatile that, you know, big concerts. Versatility is the key to this, so that we can be in the mix bidding on events and to bring people to Calis County. The hotel's a key thing, for sure. And I think we're gonna probably get a hotel deal done. I'm confident of that. And all of a sudden, Longview Kelso and Calis County will be an exit point off Interstate 5 as these people are going up and down with their kids or just with their interests. And one other thing I would say is that I'm very happy that no one has turned their back on the fair community, on the equestrian community. Because I know that was a concern early. They thought the fair was gonna be taken out of town, and that's not the case. The fair will thrive. The equestrian level of this will thrive. I think this facility, if done right, will tie West Kelso and Longview. Vander Cook Way could become a great corridor for restaurants and entertainment. And so, might be when I'm long gone, but I want Longview Kelso and Calis County to have something special. And it's now time. It's time for us to do this.
So what's the prognosis right now on the hotel idea? I know that that kind of stalled for... What kind of steps would have to be taken on our part first for him to be motivated enough to come here? Right.
It's, I know he wants to be down here. I know, I know him personally, and I know he wants to be down here. I think some of the projections, Wyndham is the parent, right? So, and he has to go by some of the projections they give. I think it'll actually be busier than what Wyndham's projection. So I think it'll work well. But like Bob said, we're, out of a $19 million project, we're not really far off, right around $4 million is what I understand.
I guess the only other thing, in this presentation, I can think of, is on a multi-use facility. How quick can you turn a pickleball arena into a show, an auto show facility? Is that like one thing for one weekend? And then you gotta have a week in order to change it over? Are you talking one court versus the whole arena? Or? Okay? Yeah.
The sports industry seems to be primarily on a weekend-focused type thing, most of the sporting things. You know, if we're trying to get the trade shows and some of those type of things, those would be weekday events. So you have those transition periods. They're not really overlapping. You're not gonna have the same use at both times. So, but it's done. And it, but it takes, you know, good planning and coordination to figure out how to do those. But I got confidence Kim will figure that out.
And it does bring a lot of people in. We had the chance to look through his hotel up in Centaria, the La Quinta. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he pulled up some dates where they had events going over at the hub, and he was already filled, full. And you're talking like, I think, if I remember right, May type issues. It's filled quite a few months ahead. And now, the weekdays are a little different. But the hub is bringing in people from out of town and bringing that, those dollars into the community, for sure.
I'm in favor.
Yeah. I hate to put staff on stuff, but you tend to ask me questions afterwards, and I'll ask the questions. If you have anything in mind, you don't need to be timid. You're all good? I'm talking to any staff.
Any and all.
Yeah.
Don't be bashful.
Yeah. I think we are kind of moving towards that. Yeah, maybe you can just give them a little brief of what we've done so far and that, because I know you've done some work on it.
Deborah Gardner, Calts County Treasurer. Um, we've been talking to the PFD and um, you know, we needed to have some type of process to ensure that, you know, the county is ready to issue the bonds for them. And we have to take into consideration what the county has going on, what the plans are for the Hall of Justice or any debt that we are issuing to make sure that um, we're within our debt capacity.
Right.
So there was, uh, you know, just let's get all the parties together. We, on our finance committee, we have um, you and me and the auditor, and we have our comptroller, our invest or our um, finance director. So trying to get all the finance people together to make sure we have everything um, thought about so that we can give you the recommendation on whether we should issue the bonds um, for them on their behalf. So, you know, that's this is part of it. I mean, everybody knows what's going on. Uh, they'll bring back in at our next finance committee, and hopefully we can get that all ironed out and have that recommendation to move forward. And um, seeing what these steps are and what we need to do next.
I think our county has a bonding of two hundred million.
Yeah.
In this area.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we have, we have stuff out for landfill, right?
We we do have some some bond, yeah.
I'm sitting for landfill, but uh, this is fairly small compared to what we have have available.
Correct.
Yeah. So I think we're, my guess is we're in pretty good shape, but but she's right. We want to make sure we look at all that and the other commissioners have a chance to to weigh in.
Correct, yes. Yeah, just having that uh, everybody on the same page that the county is going to issue the bonds or not. That's all I had.
Okay. Well, I I think, Bob, the short answer is we want to keep moving forward on this thing.
All right. Well, we'll um, we will keep keep moving ahead. I know you're attending our meetings. Probably going to keep the board border abreast of that there. And uh, and uh, Deborah and Kathy have been great to work with on our bond bond and financing now. And and Kurt Kurt kind of takes the lead for us on the finance side of things. So we'll we'll keep those dialogues going. And Bronson and your attorney will work on the Isla, and we'll try and see if we can meet those schedules we got.
Okay, perfect.
Right.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thanks, everybody, for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else today, Kelly?